Stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, a moment of silent reflection for tomorrow's 17th anniversary of the tragic events of September 11, 2001, please. Thank you, please have a seat. Make sure your phones are on silent or vibrate, please. Rocon. I'll get here.
Kramer, Rechner, Reese, Easter.
While she's walking up here, the City of Sunbury Caring Award is to identify and reinforce the activities of our citizens who have made an exceptional contribution to our community as a concerned citizen and has established themselves as a role model for society and particularly the citizens of our community. I identify this person, Lindy Lloyd, and I award her the City of Sunbury Caring Award. Thank you, Lindy, for providing a great service to the City of Sunbury with organizing the Second Annual September 8, 2018 Arts and Curiosity Fest and for all the hard work you and your volunteers have put forth to make the festival a success and bringing people together from within our community and all over Pennsylvania to our city. Your actions have helped to make our community stronger and a better place to live, work, and visit. I look forward to all future Arts and Curiosity Fests for years to come.
If you have something to say?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the support from all of the local businesses who took a chance on my idea even though they weren't really sure what to expect or what I was doing. So I really appreciate all the help from all of the local businesses that surround the Shore Alley and up and down Market Street. So I really appreciate the efforts that they put into helping me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I make a motion to approve the minutes of August 13, 2018, and August 27, 2018, and the reports of the Fire Department, Police Department, Treasurer, Controller, Engineer, and Code Office. Do I have a second?
Kramer? Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Karlovic?
Are there any audience comments on agenda items only at this time? Please stand up for the podium, mention your name.
Regina Russell, elected Democrat Committee Woman for Ward Two. Every time there's a tax exoneration, I'm always asking what the amount is. To prevent me from doing that can be included on the agenda very much like the invoices for the grants, fuels, and payables.
We can do that next month.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, thank you. Councilman Easter, Chester Street?
Yes, we have two invoices there for Chester Street. Invoice 1802-87 with an amount of $2,500. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
And the invoice 1803-26 with an amount of $4,500. I'll make a motion to pay that out.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
You're both getting paid out of CD Condon, right? CD, do you report?
I have received two police officer applications to be part-time with the Sunbury Police Department. Officer Jonathan Rush has 24 years of experience, and Officer Keith Tamburelli has over 25 years of experience. I make a motion to hire both officers to be placed on our part-time list and to be used as needed at a pay of $22 an hour throughout sessions.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Where are they? Are they working presently somewhere else?
Uh, yes. I don't have their applications, but I don't remember where they're from. Rush is from Millersburg and Tamburelli is from Coleman.
This isn't one of the guys that turned the job down originally, is it?
No. Our officer in charge, Corporal Brett Hare, and I met with our civil service board to recommend changes to our civil service procedures, and they agreed. 4.1E physical agility testing. We have removed the MOPAC standards for the physical agility testing to allow us to form our own physical agility testing procedures. We removed the 1.5 mile agility test and replaced it with push-ups and a body drag. 5.4 provisional appointments. For urgent reasons, we are able to appoint an officer when no current eligibility list exists for a non-competitive examination. We have removed a three-week provision and made it within six months of appointment to hold a competitive examination and to certify a list of eligible candidates. I make a motion to accept both changes to our civil service regulations, 4.1E and 5.4.
I'll second it.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
With our city clerk to his spec retiring in January, I believe now is the time to change and keep up to date with the city third-class codes and regulations and laws. Because the city clerk has been removed from the city third class and has been replaced with either city manager or a city administrator at this time. I make a motion to repeal our current city administrator ordinance, Chapter 28, Article 8, and replace it with the new city administrator ordinance that is in line with the third-class city code. And the new city administrator ordinance that we're replacing is replacing a 2006 ordinance that the city adopted a long time ago, and we're just trying to keep it up to date with the current laws. Do I have a second?
What would the change be? Because it might tend to take as long.
Choice. That's the experience. The changes are basically small, but the city code changed between 2006 and now, so we had to make a couple of changes. The...I'm just looking here to make sure I remember which is which. The one thing is that, the major thing, just, I mean, that was changed is the mayor was in charge of basically the city administrator in all respects in the old ordinance. In the new ordinance, it's the entire city council. And the mayor is, you know, suggested that we should have that change at this point. And all of the heads of the departments will deal directly with the city administrator rather than dealing between the city administrator, the mayor, and then the heads of the department. That's the main change. There were some other little changes as far as language, but they were all basically to make that change. Does that answer your question?
Yes, very well, thank you.
Sorry, Regina Russell. It went with it being?
If y'all can hold your question or your comments toward the end, for the end, because we already have the audience comment on the agenda items, thank you.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Karlovic?
Need my water for this next one. All right, as you all are aware, when I first came in the office, I made mention that a council meeting that I wanted to look into making property registration ordinances across Pennsylvania to see if we can find something that can work out here in Sunbury. The last few months, I've been working really close with our solicitor, Joe Wees, and we've been going back and forth with an ordinance that we've been writing, rewriting, editing, and comparing with other municipalities and trying to figure out what exactly we need here in the city. And right now, I believe we have the perfect thing for us. Jurisdictions throughout our country in Pennsylvania are proposing, enacting, and enforcing ordinances that require the registration of vacant residential and commercial properties as well as those in foreclosure. I have found 87 municipalities within Pennsylvania that have some form of vacant property registration, including fees. Communities that I have spoken with have all said basically the same thing. At first, there was backlash from certain members of their communities, most of whom owned vacant properties. After the implementation of the ordinance... If everyone can please shut your cellphones off, please don't vibrate or silence. After the implementation of the ordinance, they did learn the proper enforcement and management to fit the needs of their communities. After the first couple of years of enforcement, they have seen a decline in their vacancy numbers and an increase in usable properties as well as an increase in their overall tax revenue. I have been working with our solicitors for several months on a vacant property registration ordinance for our city. This ordinance is not written to be a detriment to any one particular property owner or to benefit any one person. This is written to benefit our city as a whole, and it will give our city for the first time the mechanism in place to enforce the proper upkeep of our ever-growing vacant properties. If we do not do something now, our city will continue to decay further, and our city will not grow or prosper. This ordinance is not designed to punish property owners or banks. It is to ensure that they do maintain their vacant properties to a standard that preserves the health, safety, and welfare of all Sunbury residents, to monitor the number of vacant buildings in our city, and to assess the effect of the condition of those buildings on nearby businesses and the neighborhoods in which they are located, particularly in light of fire safety hazards and unlawful occupancy by transients, including illicit drug users and traffickers, reduction in property values, and the long-term stability of our neighborhoods. The way this ordinance is written, a property whether commercial or residential becomes deemed vacant if no person currently conducts a lawfully licensed business there or lawfully resides in or lives in any part of the building for a period of 60 days or more. This does not deem a property vacant if, for example, it is a four-unit apartment building and three units are vacant. That building would only be deemed vacant if all units are vacant at the same time. When a property becomes vacant, the owner has within 30 days to register the property with the city and paying the associated fees if a waiver of fees has not been accepted, giving the owner up to 90 days of vacancy before registration is required to be on file, and a safety inspection conducted by the code administration office within 30 days of registration. As with anything, this ordinance will take us all some time to get used to and learn. This is a tool for us to utilize, and we will be able to enforce it after we accept it. Sunbury deserves this ordinance because we are unable to effect a change in our growing vacant property problems without a proper ordinance to allow us to do so. I believe in this ordinance, and I believe this will help curb our ever-growing vacant property issues. At this time, does the council have any questions or comments on this before I make a motion?
I think it's unenforceable. My department, the department, is going to have to, going to have to work with this, and I don't have the manpower to enforce it. We have 2,700 rentals that basically might inspect by himself on a three-year rotation. I have two part-time employees that basically handle all the complaints and and do calls and stuff like that. This added burden without more people within my department. At this time, we don't have the money to add people. I'm not saying down the road it's not going to be feasible, but at this point in time, it's unenforceable as far as I'm concerned by my department. Secondly, I believe it should be incorporated with an ordinance that was brought up before about licensing commercial rentals. I think if we do that all together, it would eliminate a lot of the questions we have with vacant buildings. If during this time we do an inspection and find things out, we can then put them on notice as a nuisance property or whatever. But at this point in time, I'm going to have to go know if it does come through a roof because it's unenforceable as far as I'm concerned by my department.
All right, thank you for your comments, you can sit here. And just so you understand, it is enforceable. This ordinance is written in a way, as it is no different as any of you, and myself included, because I've recently done this. We own property here in the city. We're responsible for a property. We go to the code administration office if we want to do construction or repairs on our property. For example, I have to build a fence. I go to the code office, I file an application, I pay my permit fees. Once you begin your work, the code officer comes and inspects your work. This ordinance is written in a way that it is no different. It puts the responsibilities on the banks and the property owners itself. The code officers, this is not a priority to them, to go out and find the empty buildings. This allows us, if a vacant building comes to us. So for instance, your neighbor, the neighbors start calling, hey, I haven't seen nobody here for a long time. Code officer finally gets time, they go, they check out the property, just like any other complaint they receive, okay? They make note on their documents. This state, we deem this property nobody living in, nobody using this property. Once they find that, that is when the 60 days begin. They'll send a letter to the homeowner or responsible party informing them of the date that they have to have it registered by and the associated fees with it, as well as the banks. The municipalities that I've talked to before writing this up, they all said before they wrote their own and during the process of implementation of it, they all had their same concerns as Councilman Rechner has. How are we going to enforce this? We don't have the budget here. We don't have the manpower. But in order to enforce a change, we have to have something written to allow us to do so. Without having this, we just sit here and we say, we can't do it. To me, it's impossible. For Sunbury to change, we can't just sit here and say, we cannot do this. We have to effect a change, and we have to be able to willing to try. They found out after they implemented their ordinances in their own municipalities, it did take them time to work out the bugs and to figure out the best way to keep everything on file, to work with the community regarding the registration process. So at this time, I make a motion.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Go ahead, Chris. I was going to say, so if the department, Rick's department's saying that he's not going to be able to enforce it?
Councilman Rechner is saying that.
I know, but that's his department.
Excuse me, just a second. Mike, I drew a phone call. You told me that Mayor Karlovic just gave you this this afternoon, right? Did you read over it at all?
Yes, your...
What did you determine?
I determined like any other change, time's going to tell. I cannot make a downright determination if it's good or bad for our department. Time will tell. I don't have any better answer than that.
I finished. I was going to see a question.
Sort of like, if I may.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sort of what Mayor Karlovic is presenting is already what is happening in redevelopment.
You're right.
So is this just continuation for redevelopment, enforce it, give us more teeth? Not sure. Do we have the time and the power? Not sure. I guess we're going to have to figure this out, because time comes.
So I was going to say, I mean, I don't think it's bad if what you're trying to accomplish with going over that. I think the intention of it is obviously good. But if he doesn't think it can't be enforced, you think it can be enforced. He's the, you know, the one with hopefully city administration trying to do this. What's the plan then to try and enforce it? If he's saying no, you're saying yes. How do we make it work then long-term in your eyes? If one's saying no, one's saying yes, even if we vote yes, if three of us say yes on it, how do we enforce it going forward?
Even if we vote no, and you kill the motion right here and today, how will we know it wouldn't help the city?
So your thought is just to have it as a precaution in future when potentially we can't enforce it, it's there already?
I believe this is very enforceable, and other municipalities have the same concerns. And like I was saying, they didn't find out if they could do it until they enacted it. And the way this is, the code officer only has to deal with these people once a year to do an inspection and to file the papers. The ladies inside the code department, they file the application for the registration, they accept the payment. Payment's not received, we send them a letter saying, hey, payments are due. You're going to start getting a lien or a site to $100 a month, fine, if you don't pay your registration fee.
Man, I, again, I think it's good. I have concern with, I think to be able to do this, we need to be using technology more. I think you have to be able to log this in, have it on the computer, all these applications. All of that information has to be there. So if, again, as long as you go into this, if the thought is just to have this, to try and enforce this as much as you can for the future, I think that that makes sense. I think if we're going in with the mindset of as soon as this hits, that we're going to crack down on this and this is going to go, I just don't know if that's attainable. So I guess that's my...
To me, this is no different than going in and filing construction permits to fix up your apartment building or for me to build my fence. You go in, they, we keep saying, we don't have the money, we don't have the budget, we don't have the manpower. If I keep saying we don't have the budget or the manpower or the money about our police department, we're not going to move forward. But I'm doing my best here with these departments. This is no different for the code department. I understand the code department's concerns. They are lacking on the budget as well as manpower, and we can all see it. But if we're not willing to make the chance or take a chance and try on an ordinance that will help and benefit the entire city and doesn't pick on one particular person or hurt one particular person, but it benefits the city as a whole to stop us from decaying even worse than we already have, then there's no point in me even being at this table.
If we go back to what Rick had discussed or we discussed before, doing an annual inspection or buy annual?
That should be affordable. It shouldn't be. If we're standing alone on these ordinance, it costs us thousands of dollars to get them codified until they're done. And if we do one, and then we do another one, and then we do another one, it's a lot of work. They should be put together and united and even made one time.
What does it cost us to do a change in code? Never even...
It depends on how much there is.
So, because we have these, there's two other ones that are still out there that...
And we're not sending each ordinance or whatever we're changing, we're not sending right away, it's after the second reading. We'll wait until there's a few of them and then sending them up to the code.
It says in here it's 10 days after it's approved.
It takes, in fact, 10 days after it's approved.
But it's not sent out until we have all of them?
It's sent, and it's on our, on the Ecode 360 as a new law. It's not codified and put in the book until we have a bunch. I'll probably wait till the end of the year now because of the budget and the taxes on it.
And where are we with...
But it's still in effect, even though...
Where are we with those other ones? Because, you know, I, we've talked about it, and again, I see that I would like to hear more of a public's perception on this, and I know that the goal was to have that landlord meeting where we were going to talk about the other two ordinances, the commercial building and the other two. Where, I haven't seen that scheduled. I don't know where we're at.
So in the back burner now because of other things going, and it's going to have to be readdressed totally because, and I'll take the blame for this, I was not where I should have been in there was confusion on the ordinance for the inspections. The inspection, my intent and talking with my men, the intent was $100 a year for the inspection, not $400. And I think what had happened was wrong numbers were put in one ordinance, and we just got in the mismanagement, sit down and go over again. I believe if we do it all under one ordinance, we'd flatter it.
And I don't believe they can be combined into one ordinance because specifically for vacant properties, if you want that ordinance, it would have to be a separate one in the books.
It could all be part of the nuisance property.
Yeah, and this is, and this is, this is going to be filed under Chapter 132, the nuisance chapter. But it's not going to be combined into one ordinance for this one.
Mr. Mayor, my question is, if we enact the inspection of $100 a year for commercial property, I want a building on Market Street.
Okay.
Okay, commercial building gets inspected, backed, no violation, I paid $100. Okay, you have a big sign, there's a sign that says here somewhere about the size of the sign and so forth. I have a sign in front of me that says, "For Rent." Code office, there's no violations on the building. I'm waiting for somebody to make a phone call and me to rent the building. I wait one month, two months, three months. Is that building falling under this category, being vacant?
And what if it's not being utilized for 60...
It waits up to 50 days. I'm at 90 days now.
Okay, so would we consider vacant?
Nobody's called me to rent it.
Okay.
Okay, no violation.
But you would call when you're at the waiver section, the waiver of fees.
Now, I've been skimming this again. I skimmed it on my phone, but this is much easier reading than on my phone. How many waivers can you get?
Well, one-time waiver fee, because my, the thought behind this is if you have a property that's for sale or rent and it's on the market for numerous years, there's something wrong with either the property or how much the owner wants for it.
Well, you already went through, there's no violations, so there's nothing on the property.
Okay.
Okay, fair market value is, let's say, $10 a square foot in the City of Sunbury, and that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
But nobody wants to rent that building. I already got my waiver, and if I get a waiver, and it says in here that the code office does the...
Inspection.
Inspection and gives the waivers.
Yes.
Okay, so that would fall under, let's say, Linda. Linda gives a waiver, and that waiver's good for how long?
One year.
One year.
Because the cycle of registration every year.
Okay, now come back around, another year, paid my taxes, water and sewers paid on the bill, everything's been paid. Not dilapidating anything.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I would come back around, second year.
Then you pay the registration fee.
Okay, now, I'm being penalized because nobody wants to rent that building at a fair market value. That's what you're saying?
No, you're not being penalized.
That's $400, isn't it?
If I, I told myself this too. I own a residential home on Market Street. Big, beautiful home. If I ever decide to sell my house, put it up for market, it's on the market a couple of months, I move out of the state. I'm willing to pay $200 a year to make sure my property is registered through the city, have a sign on it with the information, my contact information, a "Big For Sale" sign so everybody knows it's for sale. If something happens to the property, the cops know who to call. If the neighbors see somebody messing with it, they know who to call. If something is actually wrong with it, the city comes in and they call the owner. We had an issue in Market Street a couple of months ago. Window fell out of a building, nobody knew who to call because there's no numbers on the building. Something like this can avoid a problem like that. And there is a clause in here for a waiver of extenuating circumstances that the city code administration officer, if they believe that there's some kind of circumstance that you shouldn't be paying the fee, they come to the city council, and the council would then decide at a public meeting by majority vote to waive the fees.
Mr. Wees, question. It keeps using the term vacant. Now, if I take and rent that to Joe Blow and use it on a monthly basis, that they can go and have a meeting once a month, is that building vacant?
If it's in use for any part of 60 days, I would say it's not vacant if you're using it for a purpose.
It's supposed to be on a non-transient basis, though.
On a non-transient basis, I agree.
What about, let's see, what about if it's a warehouse?
All right, here's a question for, how many council members own vacant and empty buildings that are sitting empty? Do you own, how many empty buildings do you own in the city?
I have half a double on remodeling.
How many empty buildings total do you own in the City of Sunbury?
None.
Did you not just say on Market Street you had an empty building?
No, he was just making an example.
I don't say, I own one market, I'm just using the example.
All right, let's open this up to the public. Does the public have any questions on this? I understand nobody has a copy of this, but there will be one available, even if it's voted no on.
I do, Lori Johnson. I have a building on Market Street, and it had two tattoo shops in it. My building is up to code, there's nothing wrong with it. But I don't feel I have to pay $100 a year when I'm trying to rent that building. My sign's up, people have called me about it, they don't want to be in the downtown. So you're walking up and down Market Street, and you're saying somebody has to call. You can walk up and down Market Street and get every landlord that has properties that has vacant buildings. There's a lot of landlords that's been trying to rent their buildings, so you're penalizing them. What are they supposed to do? You're trying to enact a code that you can have somebody come in once a year to inspect your building, which I don't think is a bad thing at all. That I don't think about. Now you're trying to enact something else for a vacant building. Isn't that the same thing? To me, that's the same thing. You're charging, you're trying to double dip. You're charging $100 for a permit so that it's vacant, and then you're charging $100 for an inspection. You got to mesh on the codes here or do something.
This is strictly for an unlicensed business or an empty, unused vacant property.
Right, there's a lot of them on Market Street.
And for your instance, Lori, no... And for your instance, Lori, no disrespect, but you could come in and file for a waiver for the fees, but it would still be registered.
Right, but it's only for one year.
Yes.
Well, what happens after one year if I don't rent it? Right, then I have to pay again.
You pay the registration fee, just like you have municipal.
Right, so you penalize businesses again. I haven't had the paper, I haven't listed with any unit from, uh, bone agency, I've tried. Do you wanna try and rent it for me?
Listen, I've got forty-eight rental properties, and every single one of them are rented. We don't have a problem because we keep them nice.
All right.
And they're up to code.
All right, Lindy?
I have something I wanna say.
Let's, let's do Lindy first, though.
I'm gonna quit her then. Um, I'm, sorry, uh, Lindy Lloyd, I just wanted to say that I was here before questioning about rental properties when I was searching for a building to purchase. So I've been in a lot of the rental properties that are vacant on Market Street. Um, not, not Lori's, but, um, but, but I've been in a lot of the other properties, and let me tell you, they are way over market value, they are deteriorating, they are not up to code. The roofs, one of the properties, the roof wasn't replaced in like thirty years or something, it was leaking into the property next door, which is why they moved their business, Addison Mary, to Lewisburg. Um, and I heard that right from the owner's mouth. So we lost a business because they couldn't get that property, uh, next door to get updated to code. So saying, oh, I don't wanna do, and I understand Lori's position, uh, of what she's saying as a business owner downtown, and I get that, but that's different, because Lori keeps her properties next, and it's up to code, and I, I understand that. But a lot of these businesses aren't, and it's not because people don't wanna move into downtown. They don't wanna purchase a building for two hundred thousand dollars, that needs four hundred thousand dollars worth of work on it, and hasn't been up to code in years. At, at the minimum, vacant properties should be inspected and up to code, just like if you own a rental property, commercial properties. That's unfair to have these buildings not have to be up to code, but if you own a house, you have to have it inspected, what, every two years? Or something.
If you own a rental.
Rents, but that's what I mean, rents. If you, if you rent, if you have a rental property, you have to have it inspected like every two years. But if you have a commercial rental, rental property, you don't.
No, that's, that's why, that's why we wanted to install the inspection monthly, and a third-party inspector was gonna do the inspection.
And I, I am a homeowner, named Sunbury, I own a home, and a few years ago, uh, the property next to us, um, they fled it. The lady's husband died, she moved, she left it, the bank took it over. Uh, the weeds were overgrowing, they threw all their junk at the yard, I had a skunk nest, um, my, do you remember that? We had a skunk nest, sprayed our skunk, or our dog, like, seven times in one summer, that was fun. Called the code about seven times, they said, we can't do anything because the bank owns it. So there, my property is getting devalued, because the code office can't do it, do anything about it. In the meantime, when we first moved in there, and didn't even own the lawnmower, because we didn't have a yard previously, and I'm big pregnant, I had the code up there three times because my grass was above four inches. You know what I mean? So you have the time to do that, but you don't have the time to make someone clean up junk out of their yard. Like, I don't get that. I think, what Kurt is trying to do, I think that would put an end to things like that. That's unfair, that's unfair for homeowners to live, to have to deal with that, when they have vacant properties next to them that aren't being taken care of. In my opinion, I, I think that it sounds like it would be good, and I think that saying, we just don't have the time or manpower, and just saying, eh, we don't wanna do it, we'll just let these buildings downtown just deteriorate like they have been doing, you know, baby. I mean, there's a reason we don't have a bunch of businesses downtown, and it's because of things like that, that they're just, eh, well, we just don't have the time to do it. I mean, we gotta find the time.
And just real quick, to go, go on with, um, Lori, Lori's comment about your, your rental property. That could, that can fall under the waiver due to extenuating circumstances, all right? So the waiver of extenuating circumstances, upon recommendation of the city code administration office, the city council may take into consideration any extenuating circumstances which may exist or arise relative to a vacant property, and may waive at a public meeting by majority vote all or any of the fees required by this ordinance for a period of time, as city council may see fit under said circumstances. If your property is up to code, it, it's a great property, you're cutting the grass, you got your for-sale signs, you're marketing your property, there's nothing wrong with your property, there's no reason for you to not come to the city, request the extenuating circumstances, and we can look into it. If you're marketing your property and there's nothing wrong with your property, I don't see any reason the council would not vote to pass your, um, registration fees requirement. This ordinance is based, to keep everyone absolutely fair, I put in for the vote by council to destroy the buddy system. I don't want someone coming in here and saying, well, I don't wanna pay the registration fees, and just because I'm friends with a council member, guess what, I don't have to pay it, but you do, because I don't like you.
Oh, a council, right, yeah.
So, so, like, hang on a second, so, the situation that Lindy used exactly, let me just kind of come bring to that where the person upped and left and, you know, let the property go, how does this help that? I don't see how this helps that, because that person's not gonna willfully come in and fill a registration form out and show up the pen.
And the pack, and the pack has to fill it out.
What's that?
It goes back to the back of the house, and then the back.
If the bank takes, if the bank takes the property back, then yes, then they come in to do that.
But this is a step, a step forward to gain contact with the people, and if they're not willing to do it, then we take the necessary steps.
But don't we already do that through the redevelopment?
Do you see these properties in the city? We have, we have your people, when it comes to the banks and the people leaving their house to decay.
But isn't that the whole point of the redevelopment authority? I guess that's the only confusion that I have. Isn't that what we have the redevelopment authority therefore, in that instance? Where I think this makes sense is in that commercial property where they're selling it for way over value, they really don't care, they don't have a stake in the city, sure, that makes sense in that case, but then it makes sense to couple it with the commercial inspection one at that point. But we don't have that patched yet, because both of them together could really do a lot of good in the city. If we're going in and we're, we're inspecting these properties annually, and if they're just selling away over market value, not wanting to walk the code, leaving them vacant, not really doing anything, then all of a sudden with that vacant on top of it, then it really kind of forces them to do something, to help those downtown Market Street businesses. But in the, in that instance, I guess that's.
This, the inspection is for a safety and welfare check basically of the property. Making sure it's not a fire hazard, making sure the windows aren't smashed out, the gates are unlocked to, for people to get in the backyard, making sure the doors aren't smashed open, making sure that the property is absolutely secured if it is a vacant, unlivable or unlicensed business.
Or a house, or a building that hasn't.
Or, if I may, risk more quickly?
No, no, listen, I waited.
Oh.
There was a price on Spruce Street, that building has been empty for years. You can see that the foundation is cracking, there's way up the center of the building, the brick building, there's a huge crack. There's no sidewalks down there, they're crumbling, on, beyond the league. I've seen people driving and making it a parking lot there now, and I know what you're, you know where I'm talking about, Rick, right? This is unacceptable. This is the reason why we need an ordinance like this. And as a landlord, who does own several properties, and we do keep them up, you were capable of sending somebody to my rental property because we had a pile of bricks. Do you remember this, Rick? Where your girlfriend used to live?
Uh.
Yeah. You had somebody come to my rental property, or you had your girlfriend call about my rental property. Oh, do you, stop it, Rick.
No, you're wrong.
No, that's not true. So anyway, you have time to do that, but there's no time to hold somebody else accountable for the same crap that you're holding all the landlords accountable for, and that's not okay. Everybody needs to be held accountable, everybody. Landlords, business owners, everyone. I also had taken a trip to many of the buildings in Sunbury on Market Street, the businesses, that built, most of them, the roofs are caving in. I had one person who owned one of the buildings say to me, we can't go on the second floor, I don't trust it. He couldn't even show me the second floor because he didn't know if it would hold us on the second floor. This is not okay. We all need to be held accountable, everybody. And we do need a landlord association. We need people who are gonna be willing to work with the city, but you're gonna have to work with us to help implement ordinances like this, not fight against it, ordinances, so everybody can have what they want.
I'm not fighting the ordinance, I think we need to put them both together and have reasonable, either a third-party or, my guys, right now, what, what we're doing between, between Public Works and myself, okay, and my department, we're cutting grass, I have a guy.
Yeah, by hand, I saw them down at the ballparks, mowing by hand while somebody's up there mowing.
No, no, I'll wait a minute, no, I'm talking about.
But let's go through this, you're saying that you don't have the manpower to enforce, you know, these, these new ordinances. But my concern is, is if you feel that there's that many problematic properties of these business owners, that it would cause that much issues, that you'd need more manpower, then it really does need to be implemented.
I, I agree, I agree, it needs to be implemented, I'm not arguing that point. I'm arguing the point that the job, no job is impossible to the person that doesn't have to do it. And that's what we got right here. I'm telling you, I have, I lost a guy within the last month that died. So there's, there's one, one of my employees is gone. I have two part-time employees.
How about reaching out to people and getting grant monies for help there? Or how about reaching out to the community and asking for volunteers to come in and do the paperwork? How about asking for that? You guys are, you're not utilizing your resources. I've talked to Jimmy about this, I've talked to Kurt about this. We should be utilizing the school and the kids in there who are more than willing to help, to help do some of the landscaping that we've created in town. We're not utilizing our resources. There, we have plenty of senior citizens in this area that were more than willing to volunteer to help do paperwork down at your office, to alleviate you, to go out and do the things you need to do.
I, Mike, the guys that go out, are out in the streets, don't do paperwork. That, that, that's. Mike does the inspections.
He does his own paperwork, too. Right, just so does this community. Witness is this on that video camera and then shared a thousand times. So when it comes time to vote, that people see what you guys are doing, this is crazy. We can't do it the way we've always done it, because it's not working anymore. We've gotta move forward.
Well, I guess with this, what, what problem, I guess, what, what, what problem one hundred percent do you intend for this to solve? Because there's certain things that I think I've been hearing that this alone won't solve, it's a stepping stone.
There's a huge stepping from, stone for a city to hold people and the banks accountable.
Sure, but what will this, what will this one thing, what will this by itself, without any other, without the ability to do the commercial inspections, or, you know, any other ordinance, what, what is your goal personally on this?
To cut back on our vacant and decaying properties within the city of Sundbury.
I'll tell you, it'll help the neighbor's yard, the guy died six months ago, and I don't think it's been mowed since.
Okay, but so how will this?
So maybe the bank will mow it then.
How will this, how will this be different from what the?
I'm old, I don't have to go mow them real quick. Why don't you go out there and do it?
Right now, we have no system in place for vacant properties. I can leave Sundbury, and leave my house completely empty for ten years if I ever, if I really wanted to. It's not benefiting the city as a Sundbury. I can be paying my tax, my property taxes if I really want. I can pay a neighbor boy to cut my grass once a month if I really want. But in the long run, it's hurting the, the overall progressive nature of the city. It's stopping people from living there, stopping people from wanting to rent the property, stopping a business from wanting to come in.
It stops people from wanting to buy your property.
When you wanna sell your house, okay?
You'd be covenant or waived, and there'd be no fees for you.
All right, because if I was selling my house and put it on the market, and everybody does, right, that would have to not be, because I should be penalized.
Exactly, there would be no waiver for that, or there, there would be no fees for that, I'm sorry.
I'm not talking about commercial or rentals, now I'm talking about private owners selling their house.
Exactly, you, you would get a waiver of fees. Where'd you get it?
We came to listen, I brought this up a couple of years ago, and it was laughed at, and, um, it is legitimate. It works in Harrisburg, it works in Washington DC, it works in a lot of other states where there is an excess tax put on the property because of its vacancy. And whatever the council deems as the number of days for a vacant property, whether it's a rental, um, whether it's residential, it is enacted. You can research it, and, um, just like you did the ordinance in Harrisburg, and you can see that it's working for the properties there. That's something that they had to resolve some years ago. I suggested it here, it was laughed at. Washington DC does it, it works very well there. That will, and I think that your, your suggestion is better, because the person would probably come out cheaper than the excess tax that you would put on the property based on the value of the property. Thank you for listening.
I just, I just have one other thing on that. Properties that were lapidated, left go, and such as you're speaking about, we had them taken care of and removed already. You know, I mean, even four down. Okay, we had that done already. Uh, that Keller Street that you just took back on there for the playground down there, there was a property on that, and it took about three years, you remember the trailer? And it went through, and it was not paid on anything else, no. Finally went back over to the city now. I mean, you already have an ordinance to do that, or they couldn't have done it. Do you follow me? They, they tore a building down.
We've done it before, he does what he's saying, that's what we've done.
Yeah, but we're, we're not looking at tearing buildings down with this ordinance.
But even so, if you go in and you cut their grass, if they sit down, somebody, and they, they find it, it goes on, and it goes on there, and that goes a lead against our property. And if it's an out-of-town, I can understand the point of the lapidated building, fine, within so long, and then, then the property is going up for sale.
I have a question, my name is Brandon Suci.
Excuse me, what's your name?
Brandon Suci.
How do you spell that?
S-U-C-I.
Thank you.
Now, everybody's saying about these properties that, if, nobody lives in there, but, say I have a home, and I have to leave to go work somewhere in another state, but I don't wanna sell my home, because I wanna use it as a rent, like, a vacation home. Now, am I gonna be penalized because I only go there once a year, for maybe two weeks? Now, I don't wanna sell it because I wanna go to a hotel.
Yeah.
I wanna go to my home, my own. Now, will somebody be penalized for that?
No, you would fall under the waiver of extenuating circumstances because of that. Because you have a plan, you have a plan in action for that property, if everything is up to.
There, well, just, this one, one.
And plus, it would actually benefit you, because everything would be, you would have to register the property if you weren't there, but you wouldn't have to pay the fees. If I happened to register, if something was to happen, you'd be contacted right away.
Okay, so it's like, pretty much like, I know somebody told me that you own property in town, and you move out, you have to have, like, somebody maintaining it, like.
That, that's rental property.
Rental.
Because it's only rental?
Yes.
But why wouldn't they do that for, like, say, like, someone, I did, if I just leave it there and nobody maintains it, it's still?
And this ordinance has that in there, that if you, or if you live out of state, your property, you should have to pay.
Well, I understand that, but you're lucky they don't do that.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, like, you see these people that come into town, like, I live on Reagan Street, and some people don't, they, they come to town, like, two times a year, and then they don't maintain their property. Now, are they getting fined for every time? Or do they get a lien against it? Because you see a million homes that the grass is as tall as me, and it don't make sense.
Right.
Well, that we've been trying to work on the grass.
But I understand that, there's a gentleman that, he's, he's, I, I know this guy that, he's an older guy, he goes and mows for the city. But he's only one guy.
Now, we both, we, the, 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 the grass, the way the city does it, is that, we send notices out for the high grass. And if it's not cut, then we cut it, and then we find it. I, now, if it's an owner-occupied house,
Mm-hmm.
and we'll go, and if there's extenuating circumstances or whatever, we'll work with that owner, but if it's a vacant property, you have to find out whom the owner is.
Why shouldn't they already know? The bank should already tell them. If the bank owns it, they should be responsible.
Yes, that's what they're saying.
We have a sheet in our office that says, you own your property, we call you up, we contact you, it's your number, no problem. I'd like to go back to the bank.
Okay, I hear people saying, like, the banks aren't doing their job.
If you go to the bank in California or something.
I don't, I understand that, and it's still no, it's not justifying how it's not fair to everybody else.
Well, I, I'm not, you know, the fairness is in the situation here, the fairness is, we need to have the person that we got to, we have to start the process, and we have to find out whom is the actual person that is accounting, or.
I understand that, and I agree.
Now, what we do is, we'll send that person a letter, that bank or that institution a letter, saying, you're, you're in violation of this ordinance, okay? If we don't hear from them in a certain amount of time, we cite it. But we still now, that together with the Public Works. They're, they're providing, one or two guys, I'm providing one guy on a weekly basis, we've been going out and cutting grass at these properties, and sending out bills.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what we're doing. Before, we didn't have that, because there was, was not the cooperation between the two departments that needed to make that work.
I understand, there's a lot of, like anything, it's communication. But my other point is, you're saying that there's no budget, there's no manpower, whatever, but yet you wanna take a third-party. How you gonna afford the third-party?
The third-party, the third-party gets paid for that, we don't.
Exactly, if there's no budget for it, for your department.
We don't pay it.
The homeowner pays.
The homeowner pays.
But if they don't pay for it, there's still some of the bill.
Well, then, if it's, if it's a licensing fee, that's, that's a process. Well, then if she, if it's, if it's a licensing fee, that's, that's a process, the legal process that must be going through, explain it.
Maybe I can, and maybe I can answer your question, that's why your original question.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just kinda listening, but the waiver section here says if you own a house and you are in the military and you get deployed, okay, for example, or you are in the hospital or nursing home for a long period of time, or you get moved by your job and wanna keep your house. You get a waiver, okay? But you also only get the waiver if you're doing all the things that you're talking about, which is maintaining your house, making sure somebody's cutting the grass, making sure, otherwise you don't get that waiver.
Well, it's still fair, I understand, I, I wouldn't mind paying a couple hundred dollars a month or a year, whatever, that, I know my home's safe.
Right, well, and that's what we're talking about basically, that under this waiver section, you wouldn't have to pay this, okay? You just have to make sure somebody's taking care of your house.
Well, I think a lot of people would be willing to pay that a year to know that the, the fire departments are covered, they have the funding they need, the police department has the funding they need to make their home safe. I just, that's what I think, but.
Joel, quick question, Joel. The code office does the first waiver. The mayor said, you had said, you heard that about the buddy system, the council and so forth, we're just under the appeals.
No, we're under the extenuating circumstances.
Well, that only comes in after a year? That only comes in after a year, right, the extenuating circumstances?
I can, this, it's, it's very vague, like everybody likes.
Why wouldn't, uh, yeah, it doesn't make any sense.
Then Harrison is just gonna explain the waiver section a little bit better.
Well, and suggest a change, okay? I'm gonna answer your earlier question, I think, Jim, and if I, if I don't answer it, tell me. Um, but as far as the extenuating circumstances, the, we wrote that, if you will, uh, not extremely, we need to give it a date or a time period or a timeframe or whatever, because extenuating circumstances can happen whenever, okay? So we purposely did not say a date for that, especially if it's something like the gentleman getting deployed or a lady going to a nursing home or, you know, whatever it may be. We thought about that when we did that section. But the suggestion that I talked to the mayor about as everybody was going here and in deference to Laurie Johnson and her problem, you and your problem, and the, the landlords in town or landowners, I'll say, who are maintaining their properties and who are doing what they're supposed to do. I see where you're going with that and where Laurie was going with that and it makes sense. My suggestion to the mayor and to the board, even though I don't hold them allowed to do that, but I'm making it anyway, um, is simply that in this, what's that?
We just waited one time.
Right, we get rid of, if, if the property is in that circumstance, so if you have a vacant business like Laurie has and there was two tattoo shops there and she's trying to rent it out for fair market value, she keeps them clean, there's no problem, I just suggest we take out the one-time language of the waiver section. Can you get a waiver? Okay, um, that as long as people are complying with the terms of the ordinance and everybody I think gets at what we're asking for, you get a, this, my understanding of the reason for this is not the landlords or the landowners who are taking care of the property. This is about the people that aren't, the banks that aren't. And along with that, I would suggest that I be allowed to make a change to the, and again, I got this from listening to everybody here, but a change to the section on page seven, it would be section 132 dash 4E. That is the section that gives us the right to take action in regard to an owner who ignores the fee and ignores the necessity of doing it. And at this point, it gives us the right to find them and then file a civil action to collect the unpaid debt and a municipal lien. What I would suggest is that if there is a period of time, and my thought was two years, that any owner is in violation of this section and by simply ignoring it, that we put in language that we could take action that time to take the property or, or send it to the redevelopment authority upon the decision either way of the city council. Um, I can do that.
So essentially make it a nuisance property at that point?
At that point, it becomes a nuisance property.
You're saying if it's been vacant and they're not paying their dues for two years?
If they haven't come in for two years, if it's a bank, like was being described here, when the bank says, you know, we don't have to do anything and, you know, they mean, and we got nobody to get ahold of and it's a bank in Florida and, you know, US bank in Wisconsin or whatever, and they don't care about us, we're gonna file with the court and say, we're taking your property back. That'll get their attention. Um, and I think maybe a little more teeth in that area and a little less teeth in the waiver area may go a long way towards mediating everybody's issues with this thing. Just to make it fair to everyone.
So you're proposing to waiving the fee indefinitely?
I don't propose anything.
Okay, but yours, your suggestion.
So as long as they.
Your suggestion is waiving the fee indefinitely.
As long as they do everything under the waiver section.
How often do we check back in then?
Every year.
So it still means the same. So that's the only question I have, so right there I wanna.
But, but, well, let me, let me be clear, Chris. Under the current section, you can only ask for a waiver one time.
Yeah, absolutely.
What I'm saying is take that out, okay? If you've got a property that's been listed for a year, you come back in the next year and you say, look, I'm in no, I have no violations, everything's paid up, I'm asking fair market value as determined by you, you or in this case or whoever it may be, and I deserve another waiver, you're gonna get another waiver. And as long as you're taking care of your property, I don't think the city of Sunbury has a problem with you or a fight with you and no reason to spend money on fighting with them.
I guess what my question was, how do we know that they're taking care of their property? Because on a commercial property right now.
That was the second part of my suggestion.
Cause we don't, we don't have any inspection process in place for commercial properties as of right now.
And to that end, I do think it's important that we, and by saying we, I mean Rick and myself, the mayor, whoever needs to do it, and move forward with the commercial registration because that will allow us to inspect as necessary properties and make, and I know we gotta make changes to that projected or proposed ordinance. I know there's a bunch of stuff we gotta do with that. I know we need to have a meeting with the landlord and Rick's right, a lot of stuff came up in that interim period of time, both for myself and for him, um, which just kinda placed us moving backwards because we were working on other things. But at the same time, I agree with Rick also to the point that those two ordinances will operate although independently in concert, if that makes sense to you.
They could be part of the same ordinance.
Well, no, I don't, I don't suggest that.
It should be a subsection of the nuisance.
They're, they're both separate subsections of the nuisance ordinance, that's absolutely correct.
Now, would we have to rewrite this though, to make reference to that if we're gonna be writing?
No, no, because they're, they're completely separate sections under the nuisance ordinance and we would have a commercial inspection, but that doesn't.
I think a commercial inspection is only for businesses that wanna have a license.
It could be, it, it, it could be expanded, that's one.
Yeah.
This, this is completely for just empty.
No, this is just vacant and what we're saying is, but I think what the question was, was let's say we have a property that has been inspected and it's not in great shape and then they vacated, okay? We're gonna know about that property. And we're gonna know not through this ordinance, but through Rick's ordinance that he's discussing. And I think the, in that way, the two ordinances are gonna work off each other in a good manner. But they both fall under the nuisance property ordinance and they're separate. Um, that being said, as I said, I think the two things, after listening to everybody talk, and I'll say this, this is the last time I'm gonna stop talking, I promise. But, um, I think if we take out the one-time waiver and just allow it to be a waiver, a yearly waiver, and if we allow me to give some more teeth to section E of 134 dash, or 132 dash 4, I don't see where we have heard any complaints about anything if we take care of those.
One more question, please. With this ordinance, the amendment, um, what happens to the properties that are already sitting vacant and have been vacant for, I've been here 12 years.
Their, their clock starts.
Right now?
No, if this is passed, their clock starts if this is passed, day one.
Yeah, we can't.
It doesn't matter if, if my building is.
So you're, you're grandfathering them into this?
Everybody's grandfather.
The opposite, it's the opposite of grandfather. Grandfathering is, we were vacant before, so now we don't fall under this.
Yes.
Okay, that's what grandfathering is. No, we're not doing that. We're saying their, their time period starts running when this is passed. This is not a grandfatherable ordinance.
So now they've been vacant for 12 years, but they're gonna have another two years to be vacant.
No, they have to immediately, 60 days.
So when does the clock start? Does the clock start the day we notify them that they're a vacant property and they have 60 days to comply? Or does the clocks, so how do we know?
It's supposed to start the day the owner says, hey, this person moved out, I'm counting 60 days, 60 days, says now I have to go to the code office. But if that doesn't, if they don't do that, then it's up to the code officer. If the code officer finds a building and they're like, okay, this place is empty, nobody's using it, then they start the countdown, they keep a file, here's the date, then they send out a letter.
As we said, and Julie, we'll get to you in one minute, I promise. But the, as we stated earlier, we don't have the manpower to start sending people all over the city at this point. But if somebody in this room or another person like them comes to the code office and says, hey, I know this guy moved out, um, or I know this couple is no, not coming back, then we can look into that specific property. Um, and as you said, there's a lot of property we know of at this point, there's none of questions.
So is, where should properties downtown that has rentals on the top, whatever, are they inspected or not?
That's covered, yes, that's covered under this ordinance, so the buildings.
They're not infected.
Because what I'm, what I'm asking is, like the Dollar General has had water stained tiles for at least three or four years, three or four years, and that is most likely promoting mold, which can be a breathing issue, which could maybe land the city a lawsuit.
Well, if you have an entity without a lawsuit, we don't own the property.
I understand that, but you didn't enforce for them to fix.
We don't have that ordinance, so we can't enforce it. But what, that's the exact ordinance Rick Reitner is talking about and that I was just talking about. That's a separate ordinance, falls under the same subsection of, or the same section of the code that we want to enact, that we need to enact.
Right.
We need to enact it such that it's fair and that we have a general agreement as to the parameters of that and we haven't found, we haven't gotten there yet. Quite honestly, this is the one that we proposed over the summer. It, there was a lot of objection to it, I agreed that a lot of things were vague and we needed to have a meeting with the landlords so that, and commercial building owners, so that I understand, we understand exactly what the issues are. Just like, I mean, it's kinda like what we did tonight, but with a larger group or a specific group, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
And once we have that, I can rank what, what we need. It's just a matter of, I, it's hard for me to look at it from the business up, or from the standpoint of, you know, Larry Landowner, because I'm not him. You know what I mean, so I kinda need to hear from those people. But that's what I was saying, we need to do it sooner rather than later.
Okay, and Ren?
Put that together.
I don't, I don't think you have to, I think it's a first reading. I think that you can pass the first reading, you don't have to pass the ordinance. And in the next there or two, I can make those changes, they can be available in the city clerk's office. And, um, we can then move forward with the second reading and at that point would be, you know, wanna get the pastor, pastor, or last one. But at this point, the only things that really are changing is me putting a sentence or two into that one section about giving this some teeth and, um, the, taking out that language in the waiver regarding the one time. So, I mean, really, I don't, it's not any substantial changes that I think you have to redo.
Rick, are you willing to enforce having the lawn cut beside you even though it's a realtor? And because nobody lives in the house right now, it's being sold.
What are you talking about, up on Levis Street or where?
Yeah, right beside you, it's a two be mine. So cannot be enforced without this ordinance or can it be enforced?
It can be enforced without this ordinance, that's what Chris and I are working on right now.
Yeah, this, this ordinance wouldn't do anything about time.
If we get a complaint, I'll tell you, now, Eric, Eric is gonna go out to Marvel's, the rain and stuff, I don't know that he's going to, but Eric and, and a guy from there, they want on a weekly basis and they have a list of properties that have accumulated in that week's time. They go out, they go, write up, uh, uh, for lack of a better way of putting it, a bill.
Right.
The, 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 the manpower time, the equipment use and stuff like that. Then we submit that bill to the owner of that property.
Right, well, this is my other question, because I wanted to ask you this. Is since you're gonna send people out there to mow those lawns, doesn't it kinda bring in income to hire somebody else to do just that?
No, 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 no. Wait, I, I'll get, I'll get to that point, but what, what, what this does then, okay, then if they don't, then we gotta, then we gotta do a citation to the JP, okay? When that comes back, that monies, that monies is, goes into the general fund or wherever, defined, okay, as they come back. But we have justification as to what went down. When we, the next step of that is if it's not rectified, we do a summary abatement to declare them a nuisance property and then turn them over to.
So what I'm understanding, because maybe I'm not understanding her correctly, is that you can't hire somebody because you don't know if they're gonna pay that bill that you send them?
Right.
Okay, now you.
What I wanna see this year personally, from my end of my department is, they're tracking it, like Eric's doing a good job of keeping track of how much money is coming in. So this is the first summer we've been doing it. So I think if he's able to subtract how much money that's actually bringing in, we may be able to justify next year or maybe two years if we keep doing this on a regular basis. So it's just putting that system and process in place of actually knowing where we're at money wise, then to be able to justify it. So I'm watching it, I think ideally it would be great to hire someone.
Okay, then, then we can look.
I understand.
But it's still the same thing, that money, we stand a better than 80% chance that that money isn't gonna be paid if a institution owns it, I might say a banking institution, or if it's, uh, something that's going through a divorce or something like that. The average homeowner or, or somebody like that that's there and has been neglected through whatever. Uh, we've had an older gentleman that we've done it for, we've had different, they paid the bill, we have had some people up in the upper end of towns that moved out of town and just left it go, they got cited, now they're, now they're, now they're maintaining it. That's the goal, is to make, to get these people to do this. But if they don't, then we cite them. But it's still the legal process that we gotta go through and it, it might take the better part of a year from the time it started to the time an abatement is done, to turn it over to the redevelopment authority as a nuisance property. It's a timely basis, but that's the ball we gotta follow. And, I mean, we're already doing that.
But we're not doing it for businesses and business owners.
No, we don't have, we don't have anything in our ordinances to inspect.
So what he's proposing in this ordinance holds the business owner accountable to.
But not for that, it's a different.
Only it's a vacant building.
I've been trying to get this inspection in, in four years.
And Rick's, this ordinance that we're talking about tonight is only for vacant buildings. If they're commercials and whatever. But Rick's ordinance that he's talking about, that we need to have the landlord meeting with and everybody, that ordinance will take care of the problem you're talking about. And that's why we're saying we need to get on that sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
And one of, one of the, one of the, one of the properties that is, the, the, the ongoing problem is, the problem that the property that was just brought up there, where there's apartments on the second floor that we inspect on a regular basis. But we can't go in unless there's an emergency declared by the fire department or, or a hazard or something like that and look at anything inside that building.
Read your book.
Because it is commercial. And there's a lot of commercial buildings, a lot of commercials in town that people go in on a daily basis.
I don't think anybody's went into that building on Spur Street in years.
Well, that, that's, 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 that's a whole different situation here. And it's, that's, yeah, I can talk to you about that after the meeting, but that, that's. But what I'm saying is from the start to the finish, we never had, we never had any authority to go in to a property that was a rental that people go in on a daily basis to make sure that they're, they are safe. The, the second part of that is the reason a third-party inspector is doing it is because the code department in the city of Sunbury don't have certain accreditations that's required by labor and industry and things like that, that the third-party inspector has. So the manpower will be all that third-party's inspectors, their manpower, the fees will be set up and the city will get administrative fees out of that. But the third-party inspector will, will, will get, will provide the manpower and, and, and get the, the, the fees for doing the inspection.
So they're not certified or qualified at the moment, is that what you're saying about your current?
Okay, that's, Julie, that's the reason we have two different, two different permits. We have an in-house compliance permit, like if you wanna put a roof on your property or something like that, that we can do. If there's electrical, mechanical, uh, structural that needs to be done, that third-party investor, which is Northeast Inspection Services, they're the ones that inspect that because of the license. they're the ones that inspect that because of the licenses that they have. And it's not economically feasible for our, for our guys to get those certifications when.
Well, I, and I can speak to that a little more. A couple of years ago, Julie, the state came out with a new regulation and a state, uh, statute that says that entity, municipal entities, including township, cities, whoever, boroughs, had to either opt in or opt out as far as those inspections. If the municipality was a larger municipality, some of them opted in, meaning they sent their people to these schools where they went for half a year or however long it was, to get the necessary accreditations to be able to do those types of inspections. I don't have any of those around here. Everybody I, every municipality I'm aware of and the ones I had represented at the time all opted out. And they got somebody like Northeast Inspections to just come in and do it, collect a fee for that being done and let them be paid by the homeowner or the property owner themselves. Because it's just a whole lot cheaper for the municipality.
Okay. The part, the part two of what I was going to also bring up is like actual rentals, home rentals? Because pre twenty eighteen, you weren't here, maybe you watched the video, I don't know. But there was a landlord that was made to look like he was a rock star. He was on the front page of the Daily Item.
I blame Francis Carcello for that.
I, I, that's why I look back there. Francis. And I had come to council meetings a number of times. I had even dumped trash on the council table. Some of you may remember that, that was here. Because of the neighbor that would not watch their children. And then when they were finally evicted, I had even come here prior to that and said, all of a sudden there's rat issues and there's mice issues. When this family was finally evicted by Gary Reese, these people were raising rats and mice in their kitchen. They had large cages, some were dead. And Gary had to somewhat gut the kitchen. But the new person that is, owns the property now, he is still finding mice and rat crack in that house. I tried to bring that to the city as a problem property and nothing was really done apparently.
Well, and that's the, that's the issue again, as I told Deb, that the ordinance Rick Reitner is talking about would be able to take care of, that would give us teeth to do that. Now, there's always the health and safety issue.
That's a residence.
Oh, it's a residence, I'm sorry. I thought you said it was a rental.
It was, a rental.
It was a rental, so it's a commercial.
Rent.
Residential.
It was a residential, right?
Oh, residential. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm getting confused. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, but yes, I understand what you're saying.
To come back to this, not, not to discredit what you're saying, but, but get back to the vacant point. Um, I think it makes sense. I think the only thing that, I guess, for request for me from the, between now and the second reading would be, I noticed with us, there's a lot of things, there's not a systematic process of how we do it. I'd like to see some kind of set, like, okay, this is what the system's gonna be. Like, here's the form, here, this is how we're gonna file it, it's gonna go into the computer, this is how we're gonna, you know, inspect it. Just so that it's the same way every time. Because right now it's not that for every ordinance that's in place, so just. That's the only request I have, and I was just.
And that's how time is, yourself, you want to have it, right?
Yeah.
Administratively, you want to have that.
Just as.
Also, I, I would, I would like to request that the inspections be done since they're commercial properties by third party inspectors because of the type of inspections that need to be done in commercial properties.
These aren't actual going into the property inspection.
There's no inspections here.
Well, he just said it was.
But it's, we find.
He just determines.
But what I'm saying.
He just determines safety and fires us.
For safety, for safety reasons, we're giving you the opportunity to do that. Only for safety and health concerns, we could enter a property into this ordinance. Okay, does that make sense? But it's not for the commercial.
I interpreted as you wanted everyone to explain this.
No, 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 no. No, that's not law work, not the law. That's your ordinance that you and I talked about. Yep, that's a different task. Is that any questions, Rick?
All right. I make a motion, the first reading of chapter one thirty-two, vacant property registration, drive a second.
A second, but the change is still.
With the amendment.
Reitner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Julie, we need the inspection taken care of. Oh, yes. I, I absolutely agree.
All right, Councilman Reitner, the things go.
Uh, yeah, uh, it's just, just nothing more than a changing of a, of a, uh, of ordinance that was written as far as speed over the gas company. It was set up that was supposed to be by square foot and it got written up to square, uh, square yard, it was written up as square foot. I just want to make a motion that, uh, we change the wording in the document from square foot to square yard.
A second.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
You, you said from square foot to square yard?
This is backwards on the agenda.
It's backwards on the agenda.
Yeah, exactly. Right now it says square foot, you wanted to say square yard, which is how it was originally. That's how it's starting to announce.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Councilman Reese, G and R Charles.
Um, I may have to, you know, determine this side. We just got this today. Um, G and R Charles invoiced with twelve thousand three hundred and three dollars, twenty one cents of the fuel. And then they all want to know just where that was.
Four Street has the portion of the gas company in.
Okay, then, then we know about that.
Gas company was supposed to be, like, eighty seven thousand, seventy four, Chris.
Yep, I know about that. So this is just that.
That's the final balance that we owe G and R Charles.
So I make a motion to pay that twelve thousand three hundred and three dollars, twenty one cents to G and R Charles.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Councilman Kramer, approve of pay invoices and, we have more reports?
We have, uh, I'd like to make a motion to pay the twenty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents from the general fund and twelve thousand seven hundred and one dollars and thirteen cents to the local fuel.
Second.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Councilwoman Kramer, Texas Attorney.
We have, uh, seven people on this list, three of them are deceased. Uh, three of them are on SSI or social security, and one of them is just low income and it's less than seven hundred.
A second.
A second.
Reitner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
All right, um, before we jump into, um, Treasury Troop, we have, we do have some positive news regarding the legal situations.
Well, some more positive news, we'll say. Um, we've been able to, in the last couple of days, work out two of the Unfair Labor Practices Act cases that we were dealing with involving the summary police department. Um, I give the police officer in charge, quite honestly, a lot of credit um, for those and for taking that under his wing. And that's right here, sitting in the back of the New York shirt. Um, but the simple fact is, we've gotten rid of two more lawsuits. So we're knocking them back left and right at this point, and we're doing the best we can.
Wow, that's awesome.
All right, Treasury Troop.
Yeah, last week, um, I think I talked to each other, we're gonna be, but, um, our financial situation, we'll be standing revenues and bills and payroll and all that stuff. Um, last week I put a call in to D C E D to find out what we can do to help with our finances. It turned out that we took out beginning years, all paid up, we paid in full, so that's one good thing. Other bad thing is we got about a hundred thousand dollars in bank and it costs us about, uh, oh, about three hundred thousand dollars to run on a monthly average basis. Uh, that's including payroll and accounts payable. Uh, D C E D directed me that, um, the only way to get out to get a program called unfunded debt loan, which we would have to go out to a bank and try to get a loan to, uh, make it through the rest of the year. Uh, we can take the loan out for ten years, pay it back. The loan can only be used for payroll and bills that we have now. Nothing else, just projects, no nothing, just early routine monthly bills and payroll. Uh, so I'm here asking council tonight, as we stand, we're probably about four hundred thousand dollars over budget that we did not think we were gonna have. A hundred thousand dollars of that was from five, um, police officers that left and accumulated to about a hundred thousand dollars. The other three hundred thousand dollars is, uh, lawyer fees that we accumulated that we were not budgeted for. We budgeted for about ninety thousand dollars of that. So we're about, um, three hundred and three thousand dollars over budget that was not anticipated expenditures for this year. So my, what I'm asking for is, um, permission to go out for a RFP to the banks to see if we can get a loan. Wednesday, D C D's called up and they're coming up to have, um, an intervention, try to help us out. We're gonna sit down and meet on Wednesday at two o'clock, or maybe that phone call. I started wheels with D C E D, now they're trying to get involved to help us uh, build our financial problems. Um, in my eyes, this financial problem should go away by next year with a new budget. If we cut back on lawyer fees and budget a little bit more for lawyer fees and maybe, um, unpaid sick time and comp time that the police officers acquired throughout the years of service and that big payout. So.
Kevin, how far does this debt go back?
This still, still, it lasted a year and a half, just started to know.
So it's even in twenty sixteen, is that what you're saying?
No, not since twenty sixteen. I'm saying that, um, last year we got a carryover because of lawyer fees of about forty thousand and then accumulating lawyer fees this year that were just astronomical. And when you don't budget four hundred thousand dollars, or you gotta budget seven hundred thousand, I mean, seven, five thousand dollars, that money has to come from somewhere. Now, when you go to the coffers, the money's not there.
Okay, the other question I was gonna ask you, but you weren't here last meeting, is, um, a five mil tax increase was put in place for twenty eighteen?
No. Two mil tax increases. And that was for the, the officers that we were gonna hire, and that money was spent also with lawyer fees.
But the plan is to hire the officers next year.
Right, yes.
But my question was going to be, so that would, okay, okay, so it's two, two mil.
No tax outreach was about fifty thousand dollars.
Should that not have been put in a separate account?
No.
Anticipating the hiring.
When you go in, it goes to a line item, it hasn't been put into a separate account. It goes into the patrolman's line item.
But that's what it was supposed to be allocated for.
That's what it all, yeah.
That's what you said, that it was, well, and what council voted on it.
We voted on it for you to be hired, two police officers.
So that should have been separate. Those money should have been separate.
When you sit there and you look at it, I mean, you look at a budget, you have, everybody has a line item.
Hey, I was supposed to be one time, I know all about it.
I understand, but you have pot of money. When that pot of money's gone, there's no line item to say per se you have in there, but you buy one paper you do. But when the money's gone, the money's gone. What are you gonna do? I mean, you're gonna say, I have two hundred thousand dollars, I'm gonna hire a cop, that's my money, or there's only a hundred thousand dollars in the bank? And that's not feasible.
Well, then you kind of.
That's not good news. What did I lie to the public about? I didn't lie about the public, I didn't, I didn't, anything at all.
Some what?
Some what is when they hired these officers, if they were to hire them at the time when they had the money, no, it wasn't a lie. But when you go and you accumulate bills that are created from things from lawyers and stuff, like, that's not a lie. You're calling me a liar, that's not a lie.
You, general sense you, do you understand that? You, general sense you? There's cause and effect. What caused those bills? What caused?
Problem with the police department and privacy of council.
And what, what's the problem in there?
Having problems, we're the lawyers.
Yeah, behind.
Hey, we're gonna, we're gonna continue on, please.
But I'd like your permission to, um,
And Kevin, that, that's a.
Reach out after the meeting on, um, Wednesday.
We talked, that's a line of credit, not a loan, right?
That's gonna be like, the only use will be possibly.
Yeah, so if we don't use as much, we don't use as much.
We don't use as much.
And then the plan is to pay it all back as soon as we can and potentially even with, potentially with the tan, all that kind of stuff.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Yeah. We need a motion.
Do you think it's better to wait to look into the loan and to after we meet with D C E D to see what they have to say?
I think we should get paperwork ready tomorrow, get the, the letters out and be ready for it.
And we still would have another, this would come back.
Because honestly, come next in two weeks, um, you're probably gonna have about a hundred forty, a hundred fifty thousand dollars account payable. And you're probably also gonna have, um, a hundred sixty thousand to pay off. So as a number.
But it would come back to us, once you do the research and everything, we will vote before we actually.
Oh, yeah, you'll see the paperwork.
We'll have another conversation.
Yeah.
When are you gonna be approaching, like, how does this work? Are you gonna be approaching different banks? Are you just gonna let her do every bank in the area, or?
Every bank in town they take me to. I mean, that's fair. Julie, I don't make the bills, I just pay the bills, okay?
Well, I understand when they say you.
I think we should allow the treasurer to continue on with looking into the bank's business.
Yes.
Well, then I make a motion to accept the treasurer to look into this unfunded debt loan.
A second. Ister? Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer? Reitner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
All right, um, here in Sunbury, we have, um, the Sunbury Shade Tree Commission, uh, an ordinance. The commission is to be composed of three citizens appointed by the mayor. One member is to serve a three year, one member is to serve a four year, one member is to serve a five year, all without compensation and all volunteer. The commission has the authority to make, publish, and enforce regulations for the care and protection of shade trees in the city. The commission may assess penalties against those who violate the regulations. Uh, appeals of the decisions of the commission members are first heard by the entire commission and then passed on to the city council. As a matter of public safety, a property owner is required to maintain, trim, or remove a tree if a safety hazard is created by said tree. Further, any commission member has the authority to decide if such a safety hazard is created by a tree and to require the, or for said remedies if necessary. Currently, we are in the need of three members to be on the Shade Tree Commission. Well, I am accepting volunteers for a Shade Tree Commission to fill three vacancies. If you're interested and have knowledge and education and experience with trees, please send a letter of interest to myself at the city clerk's office. Here at two twenty-five Margaret Street, Sunbury, here. Is there any audience comment at this time?
Jan Doherty. Um, first of all, I understand I have nothing known, nothing against a city administrator about what I'm gonna say. Over a year ago, Miller jumped ship, whatever you wanna say he did. Um, and it was talked about, and here again, talked about, that one of the reasons he was leaving was he was going to be brought back as city administrator. Don't know if there's any truth to that or not. However, your applications, you were going to be taking applications for.
For city administrator.
City administrator. Are we going to be told who those, we don't need to know who, we're not making the selection. But are we going to be told who those people are before the decision is made?
Isn't there, I don't know if I still have a phone, but can, do you have a list of what the recommendations, qualifications?
Oh, yeah, the duties.
Yeah, yeah, do you have that? That can be read.
I have the city, I have the city clerks, or city administrators code there. That's not what I'm questioning. I want to know if there are people here that have.
So it's gonna be just like any other, uh, corporation or business entity when you're hiring an employee. We're gonna receive the applications. I've already informed the council. We're, we're already currently receiving applications for the position of city administrator and to replace, um, Cheryl Delcy for the assistant administrative position, okay? And it's gonna be, um, we're receiving the applications and once, we already put it, I put on a time slot of September twenty-eighth, I believe. And once September twenty-eighth hits, that's the deadline that we are no longer receiving applications for the positions. We will review the applications. We're gonna start calling people in for interviews. And then once we decide, uh, or, once we find the qualified candidate, then we're gonna come here as a council lay it out for, these are the candidates that we believe are qualified for the position.
Well, I wanted to know. The only other thing I have to question and maybe just blister the answer this. can answer this. I don't, for the life of me, understand how our city has to pay Miller's salary if, I don't understand, maybe somebody can explain it to me. You talk about his contract and he was ill. He has, what did it say in the newspaper, that he had some issues, long-running issues. Shouldn't that have been disclosed when he applied for the city to become?
I'm gonna let this solicitor, um, answer your questions.
I'll do the best I can, okay, legally. The answer to your question is that prior council and mayor and whoever, solicitor, had agreed to a, there was an old contract, and there's not a whole lot we can do about it. And under that old contract, it stated that we had to pay Mr. Miller. And that's what we're doing. I can't go into a whole lot of detail there because of the personnel.
Legally, we cannot discuss this right now.
I can tell you that much, but we're not really allowed to.
Am I disclosure agreement, am I right? Was there a non-disclosure?
No, not, not disclosure.
Just right now, I'm just gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna further that. The lady in the middle?
Hi, my name is Deloitte Parsons, and I'm P A R S O N S. This might be somewhat redundant, but I have sat through all of this and then I need to say what I came here to say. Uh, the particular building that I am interested in, in the nuisance building line, is the vacant factory at the corner of Second and Spur. I have at least two, maybe three times, directly with Mr. Reichtner, questioned why that building is still standing. Uh, it is unsafe, the windows are broken, there's all kinds of pigeons and other vermin that are in there and out of there. And, um, it's my understanding that the owner bought it from the city for a very minor amount with the promise of repurposing that building. Nothing has ever been done with that building. The sidewalks are atrocious, a great hazard to myself, my grandson, who maybe wanna walk around the block. I realize this is the third ward, but, uh, we still need to have safe sidewalks. And, uh, I'd really like to know, um, Mr. Reichtner said, "Well, we, uh, we fine him and he pays the fine." Okay, you have done that how many times? What else can be done? That building needs to go. It's a hazard, a major hazard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Kevin, the reason I asked you that question about the milk tax increase, whether or not it was placed in a separate account, was because you indicated that you wanted the wet ones' account separated. So are those?
One, they had the accounts in the private grants account, that was just an account itself, sort of like.
That's what I wanted to.
Using in a park or anything like that, that's where the wet ones' account is.
Okay, so it is not.
That's a private grants, it's private grants, it's a GoFundMe project which restarted its own new account.
And anybody that came in and physically gave you a check or cash, it was not touched?
Not quite in the general fund. But the five mil, the two mil increase now, that goes directly in their general fund because that is real estate tax.
Okay, and just, just for clarification here, why am I under the impression it was five mil?
I have no idea. We had so much we could raise it, we had a five mil cap, after that we're done.
Okay, right, that is why I asked that question.
Five, five mils is what we have a limit, we have to have a budget for it.
Okay, because it was supposed to be designated, and that's why I asked, if it was in the separation.
Well, and we, we had, we had a budget.
Oh, I understand.
And the budget was, you know, in fact, it had included two officers at the time, you know, so, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Yeah, I was, like I said, it was a booking, I get it, but, thanks.
Any other public comments? Francis?
Julie, I just wanna.
You have to come up front to the podium. I'm sorry, I can't hear you if you don't come up to the podium.
I'll do it for you.
I just wanna clarify that that front page story was not done by me, it was done by Justin Strauss.
I just wanted to know.
Sorry.
I just want to, I'm gonna put a picture for the city about Phil Mypoff that we talked about last time.
Which one was it again? I think we looked at it, we should throw it at me exactly.
Oh, behind the, on the park, please.
Right, right, right down around, we're parking around there.
Yeah.
I know the ones that I talked to about taking care of.
Yeah, well, they weren't, yeah, they weren't taking care of. I've been calling down there to the city board since the spring.
Okay, I know we took a pair, a bunch of them, but.
Yeah, I'm only, yeah, I left messages, so.
Give me one more time, the exact address.
Well, it's, uh, mine's 1095, and it's like back right around Keller there. They all have a car, yeah, there's no sign on there, but it's right off the, the Walnut Street Exchange there. You know what I'm talking about? Domino's gonna get it. They're gonna go over me, a pizza mall there. They're gonna get it.
I'm gonna wait, I am.
This is for Chris, since he's your department. Um, the alley directly next to my house, uh, is on Highland and my alley is on Main. Um, so, um, I live up on Highland Avenue, um, uh, it is completely tore up on that side, um, a year or two ago, maybe they redid the other part of the alley, which kind of like goes up around behind Marbury Street. If, if we could fix that, okay. Um, and, um, it's, it's literally crumbling apart, and I just wanted to bring attention to it, um, that basically there was some vehicle that went through and left a huge, yeah, I don't know. Actually, I don't know what did it, but I went outside and there was like all the way down the street, like there's a huge gash, and, um, I do know that, um, neighbors that live on South Street, um, I'm sorry, I'm like thinking of their amount of direction now. Um, they have, uh, they're constantly with their four-wheelers and their dirt bikes and their stuff up and down that alley, like.
So it's in like the 1200 area of Highland?
Yeah, all the time, and I just wanted to, um, just bring attention to it, you know, put it out there that it would be nice to maybe have it fixed.
All right, um, I have, I have a quick comment though, councilman likes to. The Chestnut Street project, all of the construction, is there any way we can get speed, construction speed limit signs for Chestnut Street?
I was, I got that email also, to talk to the contractors, and they're not sure where they see the speakers because it's restricted down pretty narrow. And, uh, I'm not sure how slowly you want them to go.
Well, speed limit through Chestnut Street, what is it, 25?
25.
I think we should at least have it posted slower because I've driven down to Chestnut Street and I've had people fly past me, even though it's a one-way.
Didn't the engineer report, they have a non-structure signs up there?
I've never received a message back, no, I hope you got that.
Kurt, what put part of Chestnut, these passing you?
Before, right before you get into the construction.
Oh, well, that's a different situation.
But even still, we should be being proactive for a community, put up some kind of construction speed limit sign.
We can take the recommendation and look at what the.
They're looking at it.
I don't think, yeah, I'm pretty sure when I talked to Lee, he, he didn't see need of more or rather enforcement, he said.
Kurt referred to prior to the construction area.
No, all, all the construction area, I'm just saying that people keep passing, we're getting calls and complaints from residents that live on Chestnut Street, they're using it right now as a raceway, and it's just, it's completely old. If there's any way we can be proactive, put up a construction speed limit sign, people see it, maybe let's slow down, maybe they won't, but at least it'll be there.
They have that type of thing on Route 11 as you're entering Mark Summerlin from the Danville direction, so I know what you're talking about.
We'll talk to the engineers, they'll discuss.
Any other audience comments?
Hey, listen, it's amazing, I tore up once and I never moved twice. But anyways, I want to thank Kevin, I want everybody here to know, you've been a good treasurer for this city. If you say we need borrow money because we need to keep it going, then that's what we need to do. And I trust that you're not gonna bring the city down, we've never had before. You're not gonna do it, that's the same thing, it's what it is, what it is, and I don't want anybody here thinking that it's anything worse. And I want to thank everybody for up here, you know, I give you a hard time sometimes, you all doing a great job, just keep on building and working together. Have a good night.
All right, next will be council meeting is September 24, at 6:15 AM. This means.
Thank you.